Could I have a motion, please, to close private session?
Motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, agenda meeting, private session closed. Like to call to order adequate notice that this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon of January 5th, 2016, and by posting the notice in the Forked River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Would you please stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, page 29, please. Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on August 15th, 2016?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on August 15th, 2016?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Seletti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Could I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting and appropriate attachments?
Motion.
Move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Seletti, yes. Mr. Claus?
Abstain.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Should we note the typo on page 26?
Yes.
You good?
Yes, there is a type, small typo on page 26, which should say seven votes as opposed to six votes.
Six instead of seven.
Six instead of seven, I will correct that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to student representative comments. We want to welcome both Jackie Frazee and Kylie Weisenberger. Are you down there? There they are. Who would like to go first tonight?
I will.
Okay.
For the junior report, Junior Cruise will no longer be a cruise. It will be held at the Holiday Inn in Manahawken. And November 14th is the Powderpuff Football Game. The girls will be playing football and the boys will be cheerleading. For the senior report, Pajama Day is Monday after Thanksgiving for $2, and money will benefit the senior class charity. The, this week we have the pep rally on Friday. It's going to be during last period. It's the first time in a long time that the Fall Pep Rally will be held during the day for all students to attend, and the students are looking forward to it. Leading up to it, we have a spirit week this week. Today was Neon Day, and we had a pretty good turnout for Monday. Tomorrow's Red, White, and Blue. Wednesday is Navy Nation. Thursday is school jerseys, and Friday is Lacey School Spirit. On Saturday, at the first home football game, we'll be continuing with Navy Nation. We're asking that all fans please wear navy to the game. This Saturday, students will be helping out at the Apple Festival volunteer hearing. SGA will be holding the new student breakfast for all new students in the high school on October 7th. Our homecoming theme this year is Broadway, New York, New York. Tickets will be sold October 11th through the 13th for $20, and October 18th through the 21st for $25. Decoration Day for homecoming is going to be Saturday, October 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. During the week of homecoming, we'll have a spirit week along with a few other activities for students to participate in, although doing penny wars and banners. October 21st is homecoming setup after school. October 27th is homecoming football game and the dance that evening. And October 23rd is the homecoming cleanup. And our next SGA meeting is on October 12th.
Sounds like you've been pretty busy already, and school just started.
Yes.
The Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award for September 2016 is Ryan Hanaway. Ryan, please join me at the podium. Ryan Hanaway is an intelligent individual and is a junior in the STEM Academy. He is hardworking, kind, and is always willing to lend a helping hand to his student in need. His humor and enthusiasm for learning affects those around him while creating a positive learning environment in the classroom. He is highly ranked at the top of the junior class, which is shown with his 4.5 GPA. He also continues to prosper academically while taking several honors and advanced placement courses. Ryan has shown an interest in career paths that include mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, photonic engineering, optics, and aerospace. He also has shown an interest in highly ranked colleges that include Purdue University and the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Ryan is currently a Boy Scout who has been working hard to make sure he becomes an Eagle Scout in the near future. He has worked hand in hand with the Popcorn Park Zoo, dedicating his time to build beds for cougars and running a food supply drive for the zoo. Ryan not only displays his positive energy in the classroom and community, but he also exhibits a good spirit on the field of a varsity lacrosse player. He also continues to get involved in clubs such as Interact Club, Ski Club, and Fishing Club. It is for these reasons that Ryan Hanaway has been chosen to be September's Unsung Hero. Congratulations. Could Ryan's parents please stand and be recognized?
Thank you, Kylie. And Ryan, congratulations on behalf of the entire board. This wonderful award, Unsung Hero, is one of my favorite awards because it's people that do all the work and everything behind the scenes, and you don't look for recognition, but you deserve it, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Yes, at this time, another favorite time of mine always has been is recognizing the achievement of our students, and I'm just disappointed to get our first September Students of the Month presented from the high school principal, Mr. Greg Brandis.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggly, and the Board of Education. This is a special celebration for me as well, being the first seniors of the month for the 2016-17 school year, but also the first as principal of Lacey Township High School. So these two individuals will certainly always have a place, you know, in my heart and my mind, and I feel like I'll always remember these two individuals. The first student I'd like to recognize as male senior of the month is Michael McClung. If you can join me at the podium, please. Before we watch the video, would just like Michael's parents to stand and please be recognized as their amazing accomplishment as well.
Hello, this is Mr. Brandis, and we're back here with the female senior of the month, Kristin Santoro. Congratulations. And we'd like to find out a little bit more about Kristin.
Sorry, my bad.
And I'm sitting here with senior male of the month, Michael McClung. I'd like to congratulate him, and we're going to find out a little more about Michael from WLTHS reporter Evan O'Wan, just about it.
I'm here with the senior of the month, Mike McClung. How are you, Mike?
Good, thanks, Evan. How about you?
Not too bad. Now, let me ask you, when you won this award, what was the person that rang through your mind?
I mean, obviously, I'm really honored to win the first one of the year, and it's a good feeling to be recognized for hard work you put in. But, yeah, just consider myself lucky because there's a lot of great kids in the school, and I'm glad they chose me.
Speaking of hard work, what puts you over the edge? Not better than the rest, but more hardworking than the rest?
Oh, boy. I think I just bide my time really well between a lot of different activities I'm sure we'll get into. And I really know how to, you know, take different situations and try to, you know, focus on one at a time, take it one challenge at a time, and then try to get through it.
Now, what clubs and activities are you into within school?
I do the TV club with Telcom, do a great job. And then I do soccer with you. I film the games sometimes for Coach Beal, and I'm looking to do volleyball this year.
Have you played volleyball before?
Not for the school, no, but I got a little bit of experience, hoping to make an impact.
And it's funny, you know, you're always willing to try new things. Outside of school, do you play any sports?
I do baseball on our travel team. We had a pretty good season, won the championship last year, so.
So congratulations. So speaking of in-school academics, do you know where you would like to go to college or any ideas?
I'm between a few still. I'm looking to go into actuarial science, actually, which is a lot of math. So I'm doing some stuff involving that. Still looking between a couple of different colleges, starting my applications, getting into it now.
So fun stuff. Is there a favorite teacher that's really stood out to you over the years here?
Uh, Mr. Laramie, I've had this my second year with him now, and he's my math teacher. Obviously, he teaches calculus, and I think he does a great job. I feel like I learned a lot from him, and that's part of the reason why I started to look into this field, started to make my decision going in that direction because I feel like I've learned so much in his class. I feel like I got a good basic understanding of the subject to give me a head start going into college.
Well, Mike's a great student. I had him last year, AP Calculus, and he needs that test, and I'm having this year in calc 2. And he's a great guy, and he's a good student, and really asks for help because he really needs it. He just does it on his own.
I'm really excited that you won. You are my best friend, so, you know, I'm really proud of you. So, I love that, and I'm very wanting. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike. We love you.
Glad to have you, Mike.
Congratulations, Michael.
And Michael, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we'd like to present this plaque to you, a Senior of the Month, September 2016. Congratulations, and good luck to you.
For the senior student of the month, female, is Kristin Santoro. Congratulations, come on down. We're going to watch a brief video about Kristin's accomplishments.
Hello, this is Mr. Brandis, and we're back here with the female senior of the month, Kristin Santoro. Congratulations. And we'd like to find out a little bit more about Kristin. And here with us WLTHS reporter, Taylor Rizley.
Hi, I'm Taylor Rizley, and I'm here with senior of the month, Kristin Santoro. Now, Kristin, how does it make you feel being chosen as senior of the month?
Makes me feel really happy and accomplished, and like my hard work is finally paying off.
That's good to hear. Now, do you participate in any activities during the school year?
I play for the softball team and the field hockey team. I'm in NHS, and I'm also student government vice president.
It sounds like you're very involved. What is your plan for the future?
My number one college choice right now is the University of Delaware, and I'd like to become a biomedical engineer.
That sounds very intense. Is there any teacher that has impacted this decision?
I feel like Mrs. Santoro has really impacted my decision in being my summer teacher for all four years of the high school.
Kristin has always been a hard-working student, one that has always shown enthusiasm in class. So for her to be able to be chosen for senior of the month is not exactly astonishing to me.
I'm very proud of you and all your accomplishments, and congratulations on being senior of the month. For WLHS, I'm Taylor Rizley. Congratulations, Kristin.
And Kristin, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate you as well, for senior of the month, September 2016. Good luck to you, Kristin.
I also would like to take a moment and recognize Kristin's parents as well. If they could please stand for the amazing accomplishment as well. Thank you, Mr. Wiggly, and the Board of Education.
I'm going to continue my report. There's an opening of school, so there's quite a celebration, information. First, welcome our student representatives and hope that they have a great experience here in a positive civic experience, learn a little bit about politics and education. I think it's a great seat to have, and hopefully they take a lot away with that. At our elementary schools, just want to echo the importance of how well we opened our buildings. Between Mr. Fieldler, Mrs. Chalini, Mrs. Winuska, Mrs. Donahue, Mr. Brewer, and Mrs. De Filippas, the work they did as administration, supporting the staff, getting things rolling at the beginning of the year, and opening the doors to students as smooth as possible, which is a really good opening. For my first time through here, I would say that is a 9.9 out of a 10 for someone who just walked in the door to see the process work in its whole. And that goes for the same for Mr. Suboco, Mr. Sonier, Mr. King, Mr. Ashet Mill Pond in the middle schools. It really was, I'd say, a smooth opening. It doesn't go to say that there's not, there's first opening day issues and challenges, but I think overall went very well. At the high school, very pleased so far at the start through the leadership of Mr. Brandis, Mr. Angelo, and Mr. Bannon, who opened up a little bit of a new era of leadership at the high school. Focused with student responsibility and focused on academics, really trying to push forward, have a great start to the school year with some enthusiasm, which we've seen from the beginning. But at this time, I'd also like to recognize Assistant Principal, Mr. Sean Bannon, for his service to the district, as he'll be leading Lacey to advance his leadership capacity to now serve as a high school principal. So although I did not have a long time to work with Mr. Bannon, I know where he comes from, not too far from my neck of the woods as a student, and my interactions with him have been outstanding. I'm positive he's going to be a great leader, and I wish him the very best moving forward. In addition to a great opening from our administrators and our staff, I want to give a special thanks to our custodial, maintenance, grounds, cafeteria, secretarial, paraprofessional, and transportation team. It does not happen because we say it's going to happen. It happens because of hard work. So I can truly say, as I said, as a new kid on the block, I was thoroughly pleased to see the efforts of everyone pay off. That's not to say that there weren't a couple of issues, and if there weren't, it wouldn't be school. So, work for that. Back to school nights, very well attended. I was at all three so far, and I intend to be on the future three. The high school, Forked River, and Lenoka took place last week. They were all very well attended despite a couple of warm nights. So the parents know, as I know, when I went to school, there was no air conditioning, and we've become humbled a little bit, and we appreciate it when we are in it. So we had some good turnouts. I can always tell it's a good turnout by trying to get in and out of the parking lot. So I think that was also a plus. This week, we had Mill Pond and Cedar Creek, with next week filling up with, finishing up with the middle school. Start to look for the principal's report, monthly report that will be now posted on the website. I'm also going to begin to tweet out and use social media to put out the hyperlinks for a lot of documents so that we can access them quickly. You can look for that report. It should be uploaded online as of either tonight or tomorrow. One note I want to make moving forward, and this has been discussion since I've been here, is a point of continual improvement in the district as the strategic plan was devised last year, and we are now in year one of three. So the work that went into the plan and the engagement of stakeholders in its development is critical. It shouldn't be a one-and-done deal, you know, "Thanks, and we'll see you later, it's all ours." Therefore, I guess a rejuvenation, a reconnect to the public, really needs to occur annually with this plan. Not necessarily so that we have large committees doing the work, but so that administration can share progress and also get feedback from committee members. So we've established a date of Tuesday, October 18th, at 6:00 p.m., right here in the lecture hall, for a review of the inner workings of each of the strategic plan action areas to provide feedback, understanding, and support moving forward. So everyone's invited to attend, listen, contribute, and provide feedback to the plan and progress. So the four committees, student achievement and success for all, technology, family and community, finance will meet simultaneously on the 18th from 6 to 7. And I encourage people, if they were on a committee prior, that they can feel free to remain on that committee and contribute as they did before, or to move to another one that they feel as though they want to learn more about or get some feedback on. It is important to the administration and the Board of Ed, especially influence decision-making process so that we get feedback from our stakeholders. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're going to put it out through the buildings and through the principals as either a phone blast or email blast, an opportunity to push and have people come in. We would like to see some new faces, and everyone's welcome to come back and do that. Before I move on to my last comments, I do want to make note that on October 22nd, Mr. George, Dr. Clark, and I attended a working lunch with a gracious group of gentlemen from our Seabreeze community that are actually here tonight, led by Mr. Martin. We call it a working lunch because it was about working together, not just about issues and concerns, but getting to know some gentlemen, breaking some bread, and having some good conversation, really good conversation. So our lunch was not just about, you know, who we were, but it was about building relationships and moving forward, which is how change is founded in trust. So I thank Ron and the guys for having us out there. We look forward to preserving our conversations and collaborating moving forward. We're actually trying to schedule some time quarterly to get together and follow up our conversations. And we're also in the process to reaching out to our friends in Pheasant Run, the communities, do the same to foster a positive relationship with all of our senior citizens and their communities in Lacey. So I think that's important that we do that moving forward. My last comment before, I know it's a lot, my first time through here. I'd like to finish by sharing a point of emphasis, and I shared this with the staff on September 1st as they came in before the students arrived. I let them know how sincere I was and happy to be here in Lacey, thankful for the opportunity, and how we wanted to promote all that's good in our schools. And I was frank, as I stated it, and I'll quote it, because I'm sick and tired of the label that's placed on public education, and in particular, the naysayers through social media and skewed news, which we all are, because that's our world. So now, as educators, we can exercise our free speech to emphasize the larger good and reverse the trend of heresy, rumor, and false perceptions utilizing our good news network through social media in Lacey, and celebrate the overwhelming majority of those deserving of recognition, celebration, and as I would say, an add-a-boy or an add-a-girl. So our Twitter feeds from our schools, the hashtag, which is now out there and is starting to populate, Lacey Pop, which is aka Lacey Points of Pride, connecting our message to the strategic plan, have began to saturate the outsourced information for academics, activities, athletics, and other good news to recognize across the district. In addition, we are working on unveiling and developing a presence on Facebook because Twitter is not followed by everybody in my age group, I'm sure. It's a little different. So in the coming days and weeks, we're looking to promote that through our six schools. So plan to follow us and join over the 99% of the positive news, never shared, never revealed, never appreciated, and feel good and confident engaged in our schools and our community. Because it's really easy to criticize, but it's really, 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 really hard to say when things are good sometimes. I hate to say the term, the Debbie Downers have ruled the world, but I hope there's not a Debbie in the room. But I do get a little worn from the negative commentary. So this isn't everybody gets a trophy and a slap on the back and kumbaya, everything is good. It's more like you deserve the recognition. You've worked hard. You've been committed, and you've achieved through your academic achievement, your citizenship, or your service to your community, just like our students of the month here tonight that's so deserving the recognition, and our reps and our administrators that worked hard, and our staff and our students. That is the larger whole. So I will continually push the positive message and work on the smaller issues and some larger issues that are to conquer in the district. But I think with the team, with the board, and a strong community, and start to celebrate what's good, we're going to turn the tide a little bit and make sure that the good news is getting out there is equal or better than what we're hearing right now in the press. So, I had social media booked, and that's it for my comments. They were long. I apologize for them being long. But at this point, I do want to transition over to Dr. Clark, who's going to go through our harassment, intimidation, and bullying self-assessment.
That's not fair. You got to report on all the fun stuff. No, I actually have good news. So every fall, we, along with every other school district throughout New Jersey, is required to report on our results of our Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights harassment, intimidation, and bullying assessments. So from this point forward, I'm just going to call it HIB because that's a mouthful. So the results that I'm reporting are assessments that our school safety teams completed regarding the 2015-16 school year. So these results are, it's an assessment of how we did last year. Once the New Jersey Department of Education certifies our scores, the complete report will be posted on our website for the public to see. So right now, we are not allowed to post the results until the Department of Education certifies the scores. But our scores look really good, so let me share them with you. Lacey Township, let me actually preface by saying that the score, the largest score, the highest score that any school can receive is 78. So Lacey Township High School received a score of 75 out of 78. Middle School, 73 of 78. Mill Pond Elementary, 75 of 78. Lenoka Harbor Elementary received a score of 75 of 78. Forked River, 72 of 78. And Cedar Creek Elementary, 77 out of 78. Now, some individuals have asked why the scores vary from school to school, and the simple answer to that is that it's a self-assessment, and it would be unusual for all six schools to score themselves the same because the principals are working with the school's safety teams to come up with this score. And so, of course, schools are going to assess themselves a little bit differently than each other. And that's what we would expect to see. But I can say that here in Lacey, our scores have consistently been well above average, and that can be attributed to the fact that we are striving to improve our HIV programs, our approaches, and our initiatives to ensure that they continue to be targeted and meaningful. And that's something that we've always taken very seriously. So I have no doubt that we will continue to perform well throughout the school district this year and beyond. And once the Department of Education certifies the score, I will be reporting that certification in the spring, and you will see that report posted on our website. So that's it. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Wiggly.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I now like, we're going to have a donation announcement. Mr. George?
Sure. In recognition of the donation of eight fans for classrooms at the Lenoka Harbor School, I ask Mr. Ernie Trottola Jr., the Vice President of ADE Heating and Cooling, to please come forward and receive a certificate of appreciation from our superintendent, Mr. Wiggly. Or maybe not. Still get the fans?
And we're going to continue on, Mr. George.
The concluding comments on the refunding, the advanced refunding of the 2009 Series Bonds. In summary, of the $19,806,000 of the original 2009 Series debt, $11,595,000, which is a callable total, is being refinanced as the new 2016 A Series Bonds was run through 2030. $3,145,000 remains to be paid off on the 2009 bonds, the portion which is not callable or able to be refunded, and that will be paid off as of January 15th, 2019. The net effect of the refunding is as follows. The true interest cost to us is slightly over 2.10%, which is excellent. The lower, the better for us. The par value again is $11,595,000. The gross savings is $633,264.3. After backing out $87,000 of costs for issuance, which I'll break down in a second, that leaves us a net present value savings of $548,918.39, which is $39,208.46 a year for the next 14 years. And the net present value savings percentage is almost 4.6%, which far exceeds the 3% at which we are required to refinance. As I mentioned, the costs are as follows. There is $40,000 that go to our bond counsel, our attorney. $12,500 goes to our bond advisor. $1,125 goes to our board attorney. $16,625 goes to the rating agency, Standard and Poor's. $1,200 goes to the printing and mailing of the documents. $9,750 for our board. $9,750 for our board auditor. $3,000 for the escrow agent, BNY Mellon, and miscellaneous costs, which are numerous, $2,800 for a total of $87,000. And that concludes what will be the final report on the 2009 refunding of our bonds.
I have a question, Mr. George. Go back to the Standards Emporium. What do we pay them?
Sure. We pay them $16,625.
And for what reason are we paying them?
Right. They rate our bonds, they rate our debt, so that we can offer therefore the debt to the general public without the rating, which takes a long time and for which they need to write a report. That's a standard fee. That's pretty much in the ballpark that we paid earlier in the year.
$16,000, did you say? To write a report?
Yes. To write our rate, yes.
Yeah.
Pat, could you also just share with the audience, you know, we had a little bit of a fortunate surprise with rates, and I think sharing that with them and explaining how that actually went a long way in covering some of our expenses would be a good thing?
Right. We, since we started this process several months ago in June, the rate, the true interest cost was just under 2.2%. And as I said, we had a final interest cost of 2.1, so the lower the better, and that saved us in the category of $20,000, which went, as Mr. Bidwell says, towards the cost of issuance of the bond.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. At this time, I'm just going to go to the podium and talk a little bit about the thrill and excitement of school budgeting.
Do you want us to?
Would you? Yeah, you probably want to just take a look.
It may seem a little bit odd that we just began the 2016-2017 school year, and we're going to talk already about the budget for the next school year. But the point is made that budgeting is a 12-month-a-year process, and it's never too early to start. And tonight, we're going to go into part one of what I call our Budget Boot Camp, a little bit of a primer on what budgeting is. Part one, we're going to talk a little bit about budget creation. It's a little dry, so if you're looking for an opportunity for a nap, this is probably the time for you to do that. This presentation's on the website, so don't worry if we go a little bit quicker. With all due respect to all of the armed services, the George family is a Navy family, and that's just the way it is. But before we go forward and talk about budgeting, there are those out there who may believe that budgeting is all about dollars and cents. But it's not. It's not at all about that. In fact, it just comes down to that on paper. But we, as the Board of Education, do what we do because it's about kids. And if anybody says different, they're telling you a lie. And it goes to what we're talking about tonight in our budget. Everything in public education is governed by a budget, a calendar, so budgeting is no exception. I'm just going to throw up some of the highlights throughout the year that, and it starts again, it starts in July and it goes all the way through the year, and it continues through where the Board adopts the budget and submits the budget to the county. There is going to be a more formal Department of Education budget calendar, that's the URL. When it comes out, I'll certainly let folks know, and I may even post that on our website along with other budget documents that you're going to see. Always good to know a little bit of terminology before we get too far up the road, so we'll talk a little bit about that. Well, what's a budget? It's a plan. It really is. For the appropriation, encumbrance, expenditure of revenue. So, what do those words mean? Appropriation is a fancy word for, we're going to budget some revenue for a particular purpose. And then after that, we encumber it, which means we commit it legally to a certain part or of an appropriation. And then we expend it. We pay all or part of the encumbrance. So, if you know those four terms, you're going to do very well. And then there's revenue, which of course is the money we expect to receive. So, let's build a budget. When my beautiful, intelligent, talented wife Patty and I talk about our personal finances, we don't sit around and make a list of things we want to buy or things we want to do and then try to find enough money to buy and do those things. We sit down and we talk about how much revenue do we think that the George family is going to bring in for the year, and then we plan accordingly. The same way for district finances. Three steps. Step number one, how much revenue do we think we're going to get? Step number two, how much do we think we're going to be able to, what do we need to spend the money on? What do we need to appropriate? And step three, and this better be, the revenue has to equal the appropriations. This is, it's a law, it's a rule. We cannot spend more than we have. So, you've got five basic terms, three basic steps. You too can build a school budget. So, let's take a look at the components of a school budget, and we'll use the exact budget, the actual budget for this school year, 2016-2017 school year that we're in right now. You've heard of the state's funding formula? Well, before tonight, it was a secret. Here it is. And that's pretty much what it looks like. No one understands it, no one follows it, no one knows exactly how much funding each public school is going to get, but that's what they use. I don't care what they say. So, step number one, revenue. Here's all of our revenue for this budget year. And you can see, property taxes, some state aid, we drew money from our fund balance, and we had some miscellaneous revenue. Those components make up what's called general operations or the general fund. You can see, it's 93% of our total district budget. It's a big number. That's where almost everything happens in our district. And then we rounded out with a couple of grants, the No Child Left Behind Grant and the IDEA Special Education Grant. And then we talked a little bit before about the debt service, the amount of money we need to pay back to the bondholders each and every year. Those are the components of most public school district budgets in New Jersey, and those are ours. So, be familiar with those when we come to talk about the 17 and 18 budget. Step two, as you recall, appropriations. What are we spending our money on this year? A lot. There are a whole host of categories that, again, this is on our website, please take a look. And you can see the money that we budgeted in all these different categories, again, under the general operations. The second part, of course, is the balance of the budget, and then grants, debt service, and total appropriations, right? All of the money that we spend, you can see, it's quite a bit. And then step three, revenue does equal appropriations. So, that's how we went ahead and constructed our school district budget from a revenue and an appropriations standpoint. A couple of other terms, so you'll understand. Some costs that we have are fixed, some are not. So, a fixed cost or an appropriation is something that really doesn't change, because we have no control over it. So, it stays the same from period to period. Examples, debt, we talked about that, contractual obligations, and some regulatory requirements. Well, variable, on the other hand, those types which we have a little bit of control and which may change from time to time, year to year. Examples, wages. It really depends if we increase the number of employees, that number's going to increase. If we decrease the number of employees, then wages is going to decrease. Benefits, in the same way. The more employees we have, the higher the benefit cost, the more we're going to spend on benefits, the less employees we have, or the lower we can manage to have our employee benefits cost, the lower that number's going to be. And then, of course, supplies. The more teachers we have, or the more classes we have, the more supplies we're going to use, the less classes we have, the less supplies we're going to use. Variable, it will change. And then PD, of course, the number of employees that we have. More employees, the more professional development, the less employees, the less professional development. Just to give you some idea, that the Board has some control over some of its costs and no control over others. There's one key, and only one key, to budgeting in public schools, and it's this, sustainability. There should never be an item in a budget of a public school that cannot be sustained from period to period. It's crucial. Without it, the budget really isn't a good budget. So, look for that word to come back again and again, as this Board talks about creating its budget for the next school year. The Board has a role. We're lucky that we have such a dedicated, diverse skill set on our Board that helps us manage what we do from day to day. So, they need to understand how we operate, and they do. How we govern ourselves, the policy that they create, and the curriculum and the programs that they help us build. Staffing. We keep them always in the loop on what's going on on staffing. They must understand the budget process, and they do, very articulate in the budget. They must establish some realistic goals, which, of course, they have to align with the district's mission. They are to remain informed, that's our job as administrators, to keep them informed of how the budget process is developing. And then, and this is the most important part, offer meaningful and constructive comments, and ask some really good questions. And in my exposure to creating the 16-17 budget, I can tell you, and I don't just say this, these Board members asked some very, very good questions, very insightful, and we're glad that they did. And so, they must, at the end of all of this, as you remember from the calendar at the beginning, they must approve for submission budgets to the county office. It's a big role, it's a giant responsibility. At this point, if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain them. If not, you can certainly hold that, or you can email me if you want to. I know this is too much for you to handle, but in a month, if you can wait that long, will be Budget Boot Camp Part Two. Tonight, we talked about how to create a budget, and I really encourage you to go to the website and find this presentation and go through it and really get a hold of it. Because next month, we're going to talk about, well, once a budget's created, how the heck is it managed? And the answers are pretty easy, and they may be a little, give a little clarity as to some of the things you're looking at on tonight's agenda. That's it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George, and we look forward to more boot camp training over the next few months. Thank you. At this time, if our high school reps would like to leave, I know you have homework to do, so if you'd like to leave, you may. And if anyone, students in the building or in the room would like to leave, please do so now.
Homework, homework, huh?
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to the public comments.
Congratulations.
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and state your name and address.
Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. First off, if you don't mind, I'd like to make a request to Mr. George.
Sure.
This document is on your website and is very pronounced, especially the night before the meeting or the day of the meeting. It's very informative. I've been coming to meetings a long time, and I did notice that I think it could use just a little bit of improvement, if I may make suggestions. The first is, some of your, some of your lists of monetary funds have totals, others do not. For consistency's sake, could you total anywhere where you have a list of monetary funds expended, so at least the public, the uninformed public like myself, finds it easier to maybe understand the document? I'll give you an example. The professional services on page 14 of the document, if you look at it, it does have a total at the bottom, where you have the list of what those professional service fees were, okay? If we continue on page 32 and 33, it also shows that at the end of those lists, there are totals, okay? But for consistency's sake, if we continue to look at some others, like page 25, where it shows the sports stipends for just the middle school and the high school that are being paid to just coaches, it comes to almost $300,000, and there's no total. Also, if you look at the page 42, at the co-curricular stipends, again, paid along with benefits and salaries to our teachers over and above for extracurricular activities, there's no totals. For consistency's sake, again, those are numbers that are very big numbers. $295,000 for coaching, just middle school and high school, over $146,000 for stipends for other stipends for other co-curricular activities, a lot of money, not to show the taxpayer. The other thing is the donations, page 37, and that's something that we really should be very proud of. There should be, in my opinion, a total. So, just as a recommendation, if you would consider it, or the Board would consider it for consistency, I think people, people who go to the website would appreciate, because we're all basically lazy, and it's all Excel anyway, and you just push a button and the totals there. Okay. Number two, on page 17, Policy 6362. I'm just curious, it was revised, and this deals with contributions to the members of the Board of Education. Was it revised to just include members of the Board and exclude other people, or how was the revision made and how was the change made? Just looking for an explanation.
Right. It's a great, great question. The very slight revision had nothing to do with the core of the policy itself. It was always pretty much read the way you see it read, just minor spelling references to law. There really was no major change.
Okay. So, the policy of Lacey Township School Board is that you're not allowed to make contributions to the Board to gain favor in any of the, in any policy that would be, or any decisions that would impact any fiduciary responsibility of any member of the Board. Correct?
I would say so, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty good, huh? Question. Could that policy be looked at to also include members of the administration, or is there a policy in place already to include members of the administration and members who receive stipends? I'll give you an example of a concern. I'm a football coach. The helmets I have are pretty old. I want new helmets. The helmets I have are pretty old, I want new helmets. The helmet company comes forward and says, "You want to go see the Super Bowl? Give me the contract." I'm not saying it happens. My question is, do we have a policy in place so that it'll never happen? Just a question.
I have no idea if there's a specific policy written against that, but that would be pay-to-play, which would be illegal, and you don't even need to have a policy for that.
All right, so there's no need for a policy, because it's covered by other language that govern you?
Correct.
Okay. So if you did find any coach that would have done that, he would be, or she, would face discipline of some type?
By us, or some other body, for sure.
Okay. I was just concerned that there's so many restrictions on you, that maybe there should be restrictions on other members of our, of the body, that influence the educational process.
In Policy Committee, we could put that on the agenda to check and make sure that if there is a policy, or if we need a policy, or if it's covered under state, state or federal law.
It is the law, but it's a good thing that...
Page one-twenty-three?
Well, if there is one, that's great.
That's the, that's the new policy that we added. We added that policy. On ethics?
Ethics?
Yes.
Great. Okay, but still, does that, that affects administrators, teachers, coaches, everybody?
Everybody.
Same rotten deal for all, correct?
School board members, school officials and employees, or members of their immediate family.
Great, good. Thank you for that. Okay, I have one more question, that's a, maybe in the future. I point out things that are sometimes way out of whack with how you think, but in the future. It's pretty scary. Fairness formula. Governor Christie's brought it to the Supreme Court. Six-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars, six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per student. How does that affect your strategic plan? How does that affect revenue when you go to plan budget? Something you may want to think about, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but folks, fasten your seatbelts, okay, because if it does, your strategic plan, your budget, everything goes out the window. So, prepare yourself, be astute, get ahead of it, get ready. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Hello?
Hello.
Good evening. I'm Linda Kirk, five-fifteen Devon Street in Forkett River. And during the day at Lacy Middle School, I host the learning extravaganza that occurs in Room F-206. Mr. DeGeorge, in your PowerPoint presentation, which I found quite interesting, you talked about the board's role in the school budget, and how the district operates as far as curriculum and programs. Excuse me. And while I was listening to that, I thought about a key part of the curriculum at the middle school, which unfortunately has been cut out of our budget. And even though this is the third week of school, it's already been very sorely felt by many of the teachers at the middle school, and that is our access to the scholastic magazines in language arts, in social studies, in math, and in science. These magazines bring up-to-date information to students, especially in the area of social studies, in an engaging way that helps students connect to these events, to this information. And they have been eliminated in all of the subject areas. I was just talking with a colleague who teaches math, and she said, "Oh, you know, those magazines were so great in math." I mean, how awesome is that? We've got reading in math. You know, when you talk about reading across the curriculum, and having the reading of nonfiction texts, which is a key part of, you know, some of our standardized testing and college career readiness, you know, you've taken away, you know, the budget, I will say. I'm not, you know, placing blame, that's not my role here tonight. But a key part of our curriculum, an important tool in our curriculum, has been taken away from us. You know, here at the high school, where the students have a one-to-one technology, they have all sorts of online tools where they can do this nonfiction reading. At the middle school, we don't have that level of access. We relied heavily on the scholastic magazines, again, in math, social studies, language arts, math! And now they're not there. So when we talk about the budget and planning, you said it's a twelve-month process, and it's never too early to start, we found very early on that this is already something that we're missing. And again, that is being very sorely felt at the middle school. So I wanted to, you know, kind of provide you with a little feedback, because you said that it is the board's role to know as far as curriculum and programs, and I also think it's important for the public to know. You know, when we talk about budget cuts, what exactly is getting cut? These magazines benefit every student in the school. And again, you know, they reach them on their level, and they can connect with current events on their level. So, I just wanted to, you know, bring this up, and, you know, maybe help the board, I don't know if you'd rethink the decision on that, if that's too late, but again, you know, we would certainly welcome any reconsideration on that part. Thank you very much.
And perhaps curriculum, we could look at that, just review that.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it Linda?
Yes.
Linda, at what point in time did you know that these were cut out of the curriculum? When did you find out?
Today, my department meeting.
Today, in your department meeting?
Today, my department meeting, and I'll also...
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable, you're fine.
Okay. I will also add, I'll also add that each subscription with the Scope magazine allows the teacher online access to a whole variety of videos, PDFs that you can print. I even have started, because my license is still open, I don't know why, they haven't shut my license down yet, but I've gone through, and I've created a whole folder of all of the PDFs, nonfiction glossaries, literary terms glossaries, because these are tools I'm afraid of losing. So, you know, again, in an age where, you know, most of our textbooks at the middle school are ten-plus years old, these are key supplementary materials that, that teachers, you know, would like to have back in the classroom. And truthfully, to wait until next year, I mean, you've lost a whole, a whole school year.
So, a follow-up question to that would be, you had mentioned that you don't have the same online resources that the high school has, obviously, with the one-to-one initiative.
Exactly.
But are there any technology resources that you or your fellow teachers have access to that could supplement this print? Because it's a print magazine, right? It's the same one I remember.
It is a print magazine, and then there are, like I said, online resources that have supplementary videos and worksheets. Each, each article comes with a quiz that is Common Core-aligned. So, you know, again, they have paired texts that, you know, address our standards. When you've got students reading in social studies, they're, they're meeting Common Course, or, you know, the New Jersey standards for language arts. And that's, again, the whole goal of the reading across the curriculum.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to board comments. Mr. Giordano, would you like to start tonight?
I get to keep going?
You get to keep going, yes.
All right. Well, it's September, it's the start of a new school year, I want to welcome back all the teachers, the staff, the students. I had read something on the social media platforms that Mr. Wiggly referenced, but it was a good thing, how there's a semblance of kind of that old Lacy feeling and tradition in the hallways of the high school. So that, to me, is a testament to the early stages of what Mr. Brandis is bringing to the district, so congratulations, and let's continue, because it's so far so good there. Congratulations to our unsung hero, Ryan, and Michael and Kirsten. Again, fine examples of the best and brightest that Lacy Township has, and obviously, they are, they are the role models for their, for their fellow students. I just want to wish fall sports, not congratulations yet, but good luck in the fall season. And I can't believe we already heard about homecoming.
Yeah.
Right, it's how quick the school year goes. So, just a message to the seniors that are there, it's going to be over in a blink of an eye, make the most of the opportunity that you have ahead of you, and good luck for this school year.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Mr. Sled?
Just real quick, Mr. Rizzoli, I'd like to have a word with you after, just if you could stick around, just about that fairness formula. Before I go into our school year, I just want to commend the state, local, and federal government agencies for their swift apprehension of the, of the potential terrorists, the terrorist bomber that they caught yesterday, early this morning. It was right in our own backyard, Seaside Park, a pipe bomb. From what I understand, there was a kid's run right past that garbage can a half an hour earlier. So, it could have been really bad. Luckily for us, no one was injured. Unfortunately, in New York City, there were, I think, twenty-nine people injured, one seriously. But just the fact that, you know, we got the guy in a day, we got him in a day, and hopefully it leads to more arrests, and we could put that to rest. I know that was pretty heavy, but getting back to the school year, congratulations to everyone coming back, it's nice to see everyone back. I know there's a buzz, I've been hearing, there's a great buzz in the high school, Mr. Brandis, that goes out to you, and Mr. Wiggly, I've been hearing a lot of good things. I want to congratulate the Students of the Month, and the Unsung Hero, that was Mike McCrone, Kristen Santoro, and Ryan Hanaway. I wish in luck to all fall sports and activities. What else did I have, Joe, down here? Other than that, I just want to welcome everyone back, staff included, and I wanted to thank the maintenance and custodial staff for the great job they did getting the buildings together before the start of the school year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sled. Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Downing. Welcome back to all students and staff, and a special welcome to new administration and staff. We are all looking forward to an exceptional school year. Congratulations to Students of the Month, and Unsung Hero, Michael, Kristen, and Ryan. Last Tuesday night, I attended the Ocean County School Board Association meeting in Lakewood. The presentation was on school safety and security. The Manchester Superintendent and the Stafford Superintendent gave an overview of their programs. The Ocean County Prosecutor, Joe Coronado, also spoke, and he discussed many startling statistics about drug use and abuse among our young people. He said parents must be vigilant, education is key. The Partnership for Drug-Free New Jersey is sponsoring Knockout Opiate Abuse Day on Thursday, October sixth. If anyone in our community would like to volunteer to assist with this awareness day, please go to their website, Partnership for Drug-Free New Jersey. I attended the Back to School Nights at the high school, the Forkett River School, and Lenoka Harbor School. I'm sorry I missed a few other events, but I was out of town for a while. Sustainability. We have been able to submit the application for the BPU energy audit at no cost to the district. We thank Mr. DeGeorge for his efforts to complete this very detailed application. Strategic Plan Follow-Up Meeting, as mentioned by Mr. Wiggly, all are invited. Please note your calendar for October eighteenth at 6:00 PM, I believe in this lecture hall. The current district expense on the Bills and Claims Report for benefits this month was one million, one-hundred-sixty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. It's on page sixty-four of the agenda. As Mr. DeGeorge noted during the boot camp presentation, eighteen-point-three million was allocated this year for that expense. The next meeting of this board will be on Monday, October seventeenth. Thank you all for coming here tonight, your presence is very much appreciated, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. You're welcome. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Good evening. My favorite part of the board minutes on my behalf is letting the public know about recent graduates and what they're up to. Some people go to college, some go to VOTEC, and some don't pursue other avenues. Tonight, I'd like to talk about Jordan Nally. She graduated in two thousand and twelve, and then she went to Bucknell University and graduated last May with a bachelor's in biomedical engineering. At Bucknell, Jordan was named to the dean's list several times, and she was a four-year member and captain of the girls' dance team. She has accepted a position at Crossick Solutions, which is a healthcare data analytical firm in Manhattan. And her brother Billy was a two thousand and fifteen graduate. He moved to Thousand Oaks, California, right after graduation, to pursue a career in music as a drummer, and he formed his band, The Rex. The band's debut single, Favorite Liar, is a regular on Sirius XM Alternative Nation, and it has over one-point-one million streams already. The Rex are currently in negotiations with several national record labels, and have been begun a thirty-four-city international tour with their single, Nothing But Thieves. Billy's band will perform in Philly and New York City in October. So we're proud of both Billy and Jordan, and all our graduates. I want to reiterate the energy here at the high school. Mr. Brandis, it's, you can feel the energy. I was here at Back to School Night, and all of the administrators were here welcoming the parents, and you could feel all the positivenesses. So, congratulations, that's not a word, sorry. And, just positive, okay. And Mr. Wiggly, the same with you, your social media tweets, your, the pop, the tweets, whatever, it's positive, it's letting the town know all the positive things going on. So, I just feel like it's going to be a great year, so, and seven new administrators. So, good job, board. So, hopefully, you know, everything's looking up. And I'm a member of the Lacy Task Force in town, so we try to put on programs and events. So, we have an event coming up, and I'll let you know more about it in the future. We're having another Red Night Out. And Mr. Brandis will be working with us, and we'll be having it here at the high school again. And we'll invite the whole community, the middle school students, high school students, and just have a more awareness of the drug problem that's going on. Thank you, that's all my comments, President Downing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clausen.
Kind of like everybody else, I just want to welcome everybody back. Looking forward to a good year, we do have a lot of new changes in administration, and the positiveness that's been going on, it's really, everybody's hearing it, so it's a good thing, let's keep it rolling. Just wanted to say, congratulations to the, you know, our first Students of the Month, Kristen, Michael, and Ryan, and welcome Jaclyn and Kylie to the crew here. That's about it. We do have athletics, you know, we're excited, everybody's getting started with that, and this Saturday is a home opener, one o'clock, Lacy Plainlands. If everybody can go, football, we'd like to see a big crowd.
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. Vice President Bidwell?
Thank you.
I'm forgetting you this time.
No. I'm really excited about this Lacy, Lacy Pop hashtag. I think we should change it from Lacy Points of Pride to Lacy Points of Positive Anesthetism. They're going to stand out a little more. But seriously, I think it has an overarching theme. You know, at first, when I heard it, it was all about schools, but actually, the more I think, and see who's involved in what's going on in this town, I think it has to do with the entire community. And I'll point out a few things. One, obviously, what we saw tonight between Jaclyn, and Kylie, and Ryan, and Michael, and Kristen, I mean, what a, what a bunch of impressive kids. And that's kind of obvious, that's what we need to do, that's what we're here to talk about. But then, I think, in listening to the other stuff that's going on, we have the Seabreeze community, that, quite frankly, they're taking the time out of their retirement, most of them are retired and have much better things to do than to help us guide our school system. But they're taking time out of their busy lives to not just come and tell us what's not right, but help us actually find a way, or I shouldn't say not right, complain about things that, that they would like to see changed, but actually help us make that change. So I really appreciate that, that you guys actually take an active role in shaping the way the school systems are run, and I, and I thank you for that. The other thing I want to talk about, I'm going to pick up off of Dave Sled, or Mr. Sled's comments about safety, and kind of what's been going on in various parts of the country. You know, we're, we're very fortunate in this town. We have an extremely great, good relationship with the police force and Chief DeBella. I know that Mr. Brandis and Mr. Wiggly have spent some time with them recently to make sure that the children of this... sure that the children of this town are safe in their transportation from their homes to school while they're at school, and then transportation from home back to, from school back, back to their homes. We can't take that lightly, and I really want to send a shout-out to Chief DeBella and thank him for his efforts and his willingness to work with us to make sure that, that our children are safe. Other than that, that is most of my comments for the, for the evening, and I throw it back to you.
Okay, thank you.
President Downing.
You're welcome. And Mr. Giordano, you want it?
Yeah, thank you, President Downing. And this is kind of a, President Downing, this is to you. We talked a little bit about budget tonight. I know Mr. Rizzoli got up, and I know the Seabreeze community's here. You remember last year, we had discussions about having that budget committee?
Mm-hmm.
And having members of the public come in?
Right.
So, I don't know if that's something that's still on the table?
No, because the strategic plan took that over.
Well, I mean, and, and I was going to mention in regards to what Mr. Wiggley said about the strategic plan, I think that gives the members of the community opportunity to come in and talk about the budget process, you know, and I know you were referencing stipends and whatnot. You know, we certainly, when we review this budget, we go through every one of those stipends for every one of those coaches, for every one of those programs. And I think the decision, when we talk about that, is, is about the kids, right? We want to offer maximum opportunity to our students so that they have something to do and they can be part of a program or part of something after school, so. But if you're concerned about that, or if anybody else is concerned about that, you should come out to the strategic planning meeting and we can discuss that amongst other things in regards to the budget and how it's formulated and things like that. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I very quickly, I just want to congratulate Ryan, Michael and Kirsten for their outstanding accomplishments for this month. And Ryan, the unsung hero, going for his Eagle Scout Award, that's a phenomenal accomplishment right there in them because students today, or young kids today, don't want to put the time into their scouting as they used to. And his project being with the Popcor Zoo Park, I mean, that's a win-win thing, so I think that's really great. Yes, I've been hearing nothing but positive from so many students, parents alike, going through ShopRite. Took me two hours to get through ShopRite this week because of all the positive comments from you guys and from the other new administrators and the teachers in the classroom. It's just been a really great beginning of the school year. I don't remember such a good beginning in a long time. So, thank you. And I love the new format for student of the month. I really think that's good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I want to congratulate Mr. Sean Bannon on his promotion, yeah, promotion to principal in another district. Unfortunately, their gain is our loss, but, I mean, he's going to do fantastic and I wish him a lot of luck. Strategic Plan, as we said before, is October 18th at 6 o'clock, right here in the lecture hall, so we hope that you can come. And if you weren't part of it originally, don't feel like you can't come, you're welcome to come and sit and join us. We have a lot of donations on our agenda tonight, so I want to thank all of them. When I read them later, you'll see it on TV, but I want to thank them from the entire Board of Education because those donations are so important and part, help us with so many things. Safety, one last thing, two last things, safety. I, when I go to work in the morning, sometimes I, I hold my breath because I see cars passing the buses when the lights are on and, or, you know, I don't see students at that early in the morning because I leave so early, it's usually the bigger kids. But please, remember the laws when it comes to buses, when those lights are on, please don't pass them, even if it's a two-lane highway. Remember what the law is and please be careful, it's our students' safety that's at risk here, so please be aware of that. Apple Festival, our students are going to be a part of, and don't forget to wear navy Saturday at the game. So, thank you, and let's move on to new business. Okay, could I have a motion, please? Page thirty-one, new business, items A through O. Or is that a Q? Q.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Right. And before I call the roll, President Downing, I want to just remind each board member that as it comes to agenda item, for the travel later on, that we should, they should abstain from their own portion of the travel, that's in section four, but I wanted to say that before I forgot. Roll call on new business A through Q. Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, except on A, number 260527 and number 951543.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. I have to abstain on G, thank you. Staying on G, yes, on the rest. Okay? We good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Section two, donations, please bear with me, I'd like to read these because they have been very generous. For the district, Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine provided a breakfast for all staff at the beginning of the school year for $1,750. At Cedar Creek, the Lacy Food Bank donated backpacks and school supplies worth $40. A child's drum set was donated by the Del Maestro family, I hope I pronounced that correctly, for $450. And Always Something Special Flowers provided a flower arrangement for $35. At Forkett River School, Mrs. Trudy Whalen donated a Yamaha P-22 piano for an amount of $4,000. At the Lenoka Harbor School, we have the Lacy Food Bank, again donating backpacks and school supplies worth $160. Always Something Special Flowers, a flower arrangement for $35. ADE Heating and Cooling provided Stanley Carpet a floor blower for the kindergarten classrooms worth $480. The middle school, Marine Mammal Stranding Center donated a fiberglass fish tank and stand worth $1,200. At the high school, we have the Boosters Association, donated paint for the senior parking spaces worth $300. Home Depot also provided paint supplies for the parking spaces worth $300. PTSA at LTHS, water for seniors working on parking spaces worth $36. Wawa donated breakfast for seniors working on the parking spaces worth $50. Concadoura provided lunch for the seniors working on parking spaces worth $150. Tom &amp; Dees provided Italian ISIS for the seniors working on the parking spaces worth $150. Central Regional Alumni Association donated spray paint for senior parking spaces for a worth of $1,000. And Ernesto's Painting also donated paint for the senior parking spaces worth $300. So, we had a huge community involvement helping with our senior parking spaces, and we appreciate it. Roll call, kind of a motion, please.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item three, programs and curriculum, could I have a motion for A, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item four, professional days, could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Again, please abstain, or I'll just note that you abstain from your own portion of the travel. Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes, but I have to abstain with my name.
Yes, sir. Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes, with the abstention on my name on page thirty-eight.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes, with the abstention on page thirty-eight.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, abstention for Donna McAvoy.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes, and please abstain for David Bidwell.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and abstaining on Linda Downing. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Item five, certificated personnel, could I please have a motion for items A through O?
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, but I am abstaining on G, co-curricular advisors and stipends.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item six.
Motion.
Okay, for items A through H, where it is in yellow, correct the paper.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Salletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Are there any additional items?
I have one.
We have a motion?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I have an add-on motion.